Okay, so I show that it's 5 o'clock. Commissioner Callen, do you want to begin?
Yes, Lori.
Okay. It is now 5 o'clock PM. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V, Section 551.041 of the Texas Government Code of the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice was given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville would conduct a regular meeting on Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 at 5:00 PM via the WebEx teleconference meeting link provided at the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. This notice and meeting agenda are posted online at the City of Brownsville Agenda Center. The members of the public wishing to participate in the meeting hosted through WebEx teleconference can join at the following, at the numbers given on the Agenda Center. Members of the public who submitted a public comment form will be permitted to offer public comments as provided by the Agenda and as permitted by the presiding officer during the meeting. A recording of the meeting will be made and will be available to the public in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. So, as I said, we have Commissioner Callen, Commissioner Golansky, Commissioner Gowen, Commissioner Tetra, and Commissioner Neese in attendance. So, we do have a quorum, and Commissioner Callen, you may call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Lori. I call this meeting to order. Onto Item B, invocation with Pastor Brad.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for this nation and the many blessings we have because of it, and we realize those blessings are because of you. Lord, once again, we ask you to heal those who need healing, comfort those who have lost loved ones. And Lord, God, we lift up our new President, Joe Biden, to you, and we ask you to, and his entire administration, we ask you to cause him to do what's right, what's best for our nation, give them the wisdom that they need, each one of them, give them the resources they need. And, Lord, we ask you to unify our nation around what's best. Lord, for this meeting tonight, we ask you to lead and guide every commissioner, our mayor pro temp, and everyone that's presenting everything, but, Lord, for the best for the City of Brownsville. And we ask all of these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. And now we'll have a short moment of silence where we can all add our prayers to what has been spoken. Amen.
Now we'll move on to our next item, which is proclamations. We have a proclamation designated Friday, February 19th, 2021, as the 69th Annual Scout Government Day in the City of Brownsville. This was sponsored by Mayor Trey Mendez and Commissioner Tetra. Since Mayor Mendez is currently not in attendance, Commissioner Tetra, did you want to read this proclamation?
Yes, I want to read it, but it's going to take me a second unless you can place it on the screen.
Okay, do you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me grab my glasses. Okay. "A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, designating February 19th, 2021, as the annual 69th Annual Scout Government Day in the City of Brownsville. Whereas, for the past 69 years, the City of Brownsville and its community partners have come together for Scout Government Day, giving many interested and committed youth the opportunity to gain firsthand practical experience in the functions of local government. Whereas, participation and the support of Scout Government Day is essential for promoting greater youth involvement in community and citizens. And whereas, the City of Brownsville welcomes you to this year's group of scouts. Whereas, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the 69th Annual Scout Government Day will be held in a virtual format with the mayor, city commission, city managers, and City of Brownsville departments. And whereas, city departments and city staff coordinated and provided this virtual format, we're not only to inform the youth of Brownsville how the City of Brownsville makes the decision that have, makes decisions that have a direct impact on the lives of citizens, but also to inform these youths about how each day, each city department proactively addresses the COVID-19 pandemic daily and its impact on city services throughout participatory. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in the heart of said city, do hereby designate February 19th, 2021, as the 69th Annual Scout Government Day in the City of Brownsville, and further urge all of its residents to join in recognizing the many fine and talented scouts who have dedicated this day for this purpose, done on the 2nd day of February, 2021."
Okay, I'm not sure if Ms. Edelstein or Ms. Blakemore is present, but we will send this proclamation to Ms. Edelstein and Mr. Blakemore. Our next item is our public comment period, and we received no public comments. So, we will move on to the presentation portion. We have Item 1, Presentation by Board of Adjustment Chairman on Recruitment of New Board Members. This is the Planning and Redevelopment Department.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Alan speaking, representing the Planning and Redevelopment Department. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce Mr. Howard Slackman. He is the chairman for the Board of Adjustment, and he's doing a great job. Towards the end of last year, Mr. Slackman mentioned to planning staff that he liked to have a discussion with city commission regarding the Board of Adjustment and the recruitment of new board members. Planning staff is here to support the Board of Adjustment, so we facilitated this process. There is no presentation and no action required from the commission at this time. It's simply a conversation between the commission and Mr. Slackman. So, that's it for me, and Mr. Slackman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Glosses. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I greatly appreciate you allowing me to address you today. My name is Howard Slackman. I've been on the Board of Adjustment for six years, and I'm the current chairman. By ordinance, the Board of Adjustment is a five-member board. Starting on March 31st, 2021, this is going to change. We are going to becoming a seven-member board based on the Unified Development Code, the new code that's been implemented. By statute, we have to have a 75% member attendance for a quorum. And in addition, by statute, we have to have a 75% approval vote to grant a variance to an application. This has meant that with a five-member board, we'd have to have four members present minimum to hold a meeting, and it also meant we would have to have four votes out of five to grant the variance. Starting with our first meeting with seven members on April 7th, we are now going to need, based on the 75% statutes, six members minimum to hold a meeting, which is a quorum, and we're going to need at least six member voting in the affirmative to grant a variance to our applicants. So, it's going to be very important for us to have seven members present starting in April. However, historically, it has been a challenge for our board to have five members attend at the meetings. It's a voluntary board, and even though most of our members are extremely conscientious and don't miss meetings, things come up, people have conflicts, and we have a difficulty many months in seating five members for a meeting. As a matter of fact, over the last three meetings, two of the last three, we only had four members present to hold our business. Starting in April, now we're going to need six. If we have less than six on April 7th, our first meeting, we're not going to be able to do the city business. If we have exactly six on April 7th, it's going to require a unanimous vote for our applicants to be able to be granted a variance on their applications. It's going to be a challenge. We need new members. We have to get at least seven members each month to be able to do the work properly. The Board of Adjustment is recruiting. We're going out and speaking to people. We're bringing in candidates. We're making that effort. The planning department is working on recruiting and bringing in new members. However, that's, brings me to why I'm here. We are asking for the mayor and the city commissioners individually to promote one new candidate each as a minimum. We'd like to have, sitting on the board, a member from each district. But at the same time, we don't want to limit you to that. You may submit as many names, as many candidates, as you wish. Now, as you speak to people, if you would find it easier, you may simply direct them to me and have them call me, and I'll be happy to walk them through the process of applying for the position. In any case, we're asking that each of the commissioners and the mayor produce at least one new candidate to get one new person on the board each, so we can have our seven regular members starting in April. In addition, that will allow us to have a number of alternate members as backup. And this is going to have to be confirmed month after month that we have at least the minimum number of members to do the business. I want to thank all the commissioners in advance for supporting us and submitting the names. I want to thank you for supporting the Board of Adjustment. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer any question.
Mr. Slackman, thank you for your letter and for your, that you sent me and for your comments right now. I have a question on the 75% requirement. Is that a state statute requirement, or is that a city ordinance?
That's the Texas Local Government Code, and I can give you the code numbers if you'd like. It's a, there are two different sections in the Texas Local Government Code. One, 75% requirement for the quorum, and the other 75% concurring, 75% vote for the approval of a variance. And our board works very closely with Jennifer Avendaniel, who's our legal counsel, and we work closely with her to make sure that we're doing it exactly as we're supposed to.
And in terms of the alternates, do those people show up to every meeting, or are they called as needed when you know that you're not going to have a quorum?
We do not require, by our rules, alternates to show up to every meeting. Some do. Some enjoy coming to the meetings. Some want to learn. Some want to be there, want to be there in case they're needed, and we appreciate that. It is not part of our rules, so generally, the alternates are not there, but they're called generally by Mr. Glosses. They're generally called to fill in when we know a regular member is not going to be able to attend.
Great.
Well then, any other questions?
Mr. Slackman?
Yes?
I'm just going to say, thank you for bringing this to our attention, because the Board of Adjustments, in my opinion, along with the Planning and Zoning Committee, are one of, are two of the most important ones. People often have money on the line when they want these projects involved, and so for there to be a delay because of a lack of quorum or for whatever reasons is really a hardship on most people. And so, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I know that I will do my best to find a qualified candidate who promises to attend regularly.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Glosses.
Mr. Slackman?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of the afternoon.
Take care.
Okay, we're ready to move on to consent agenda, consent agenda items, 1 through 11 that were on the original agenda posted, and then there was a 12th item posted on the addendum to the agenda as well.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, we'll move on to items for individual consideration. Item number one, consideration and action for approval of an inter-local agreement between the City of Brownsville and Brownsville Public Utilities Board, or the Risacas, in the vicinity of the City of Brownsville, Texas, ecosystem restoration project managed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents required for implementation, city manager's office.
Mayor Pro Temp, this is Amido Gonzalez with city manager's office. If you can allow me to share whoever's controlling the screen.
You're able to share, Ramiro.
Thank you, sir. I'll start with this presentation really quick. I just wanted to give you a kind of a broad overview of the Risaca, the Risaca effort with the Corps. So, if you go back to history of the Risaca Restoration, there was, in 2013, 2014, there was some self-funded projects through PUB, and that really was kind of the initial phase, which is the cemetery Risaca and the zoo phase. And so, since then, it's really been about a partnership with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And this kind of, just kind of takes you through a little bit of the timeline. And so, the project, the overall, the entire Risaca system, the U.S. Army Corps consider, you know, labels it the Brownsville Risaca Project. And really, it's about the restoration of Risaca de la Guerra and the Risaca de Rancho de Eco Systems. And so, in 2015, BPUB would see, with the City of Brownsville executed an inter-local for the feasibility study. It was a three-year feasibility study, and PUB went to agree. It's always a partnership because PUB, the government considers the city as a fiscal sponsor. And so, in August of the same year, we executed a feasibility cost-share agreement, and BPUB agreed to pay a 50-50 cost-share. So, you, you know, this is always, obviously always leveraging federal money. And so, in the case of the, of the, of the three-year feasibility study, it was a 1.5 million local and 1.5 million federal. Today, we have kind of the next phase of this, so the feasibility study has been completed, and now there's obviously the phasing of this project. And so, what we have before you tonight is really the execution of an inter-local for the design and construction phase of the first phase of this project. And, and once again, before you today is really the, the, an agreement to start the design, not even the construction, right? And so, the agreement today is an agreement in the amount of $2,000,080, 1.3 of that being provided by the Corps, and $728,000 being provided by local funds, local PUB funds. And so, just to kind of give you an idea of how these core projects work, the, the, the last project we did was, was the Risaca Boulevard Project. That, that was, once again, another COB, PUB, Corps project. There was a feasibility cost-share agreement for the study. There's always, there's a lot of studies and a lot of design. And so, that was in the, on January of 2015. And there was, at the time, it was an $140,000 share for the feasibility study. Then we moved into an inter-local, which is what we're doing now, with the Jagu Risaca and designing construction phase of the project. So, we obviously agreed to participate in the design phase. And then, a year later, the City of Brownsville and the Corps executed a partner, a project partnership agreement, which is, the Corps had the funding to build it and do the improvements. And so, so therefore, you know, we executed that agreement. And then, I believe that project just finished up, just in the last six, eight months, something like that. And the PUB team is here to answer any questions. So, this is just an idea of, you know, we don't have a strict timeline, but normally, design is about a year. And then, we, we are dependent on, you know, when the funding becomes available. You're now shovel-ready, and then, once you're shovel-ready, it's probably about another year of construction. And so, we just want to give you, to give you an example of how this works. So, the project before you tonight for the agreement is to start the design of the, of the restoration of the Jagu Risaca. And so, with that, I will entertain any questions. Like I said, the PUB team is here to answer any project questions or anything, anything that I can't answer.
Thank you, Ramido. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You said that the design process takes about a year?
Yes, sir.
And then, the implementation, how, how long would that take afterwards?
Well, it, it just depends on availability of funds, right? That, I mean, they normally, in my experience in working with Renee, Money Scott, and PUB, they normally don't start the design process unless they have some sort of idea that they can fund the construction. But that's not necessarily guaranteed all the time. So, i- in a smooth, in a smooth way, it goes the way that I just showed you. A year design study, by the time you're done with that year, the funding's available, then you sign the next agreement, and then you move forward with construction. So, the earliest possible, I think you could see, some construction would be a year and a half, maybe two years from now. Just, this is just the bureaucracy. This is the process of using and working with the Corps. Unfortunately, that's just the way it is. But, you know, obviously, we always work to try to condense that timeline.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Ramido.
And is it, is it action item number two as well, Risacas as well?
We need you to vote on that item, Commissioner Callen.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve, action item number one.
To approve? Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The...
Item two, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2021-002, authorizing the Brownsville Public Utilities Board to fund expenses related to restoration and maintenance of Risaca systems, city manager's office.
Mayor Pro Temp, Commissioners, this is, obviously, this is a related item. And the, so now that you passed the agreement, you know, and authorized city manager to execute all those agreements, the Public Utilities Board requested a resolution, you know, from the city commission authorizing the expenditure for, for this specific project. And so, you know, I, I have an abundance of caution. That's why this resolution is before you tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three, consideration and action to award work order number 2020-005 to Hanson Professional Services for the City of Brownsville Four Corners Detention Pond and Park Improvement in the amount of $192,000 from, from the terms and conditions of the on-call term contract for engineering, surveying, and miscellaneous service projects, RFQ number QES-40-0620, Engineering and Public Works Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. My name's Dodo Garcia with the Engineering Department. This particular project, if you can flip to the next slide, please. It is for the design and the surveying for the Four Corners Detention Pond. Quick to the next slide, please. Thank you. This, the area that you see here is a proposal right now to do a detention pond to assist the flooding in the Four Corners area. And along with the, with, with that, we're looking to expand a water plane park and include some amenities for recreational activities. The ones that are shown here are just for reference. We will be trying to get additional funding for these amenities as well. We're looking to work with Texas Park and Wildlife to see what resources are available once we begin the design of this project. This particular project is part of the 2019 Texas Water Development Board funding. The funding for this project was awarded sometime back last year. This is the final project that we're pending award for the design. As far as the detention pond and the project, if you all have any questions at this time, I'll be more than glad to answer them. Just to let you all know, as far as the engineering contracts that we've awarded with the current rotation list, I know the last time it was brought up, this will be the second contract that we award in, in, in our engineers rotation, or on-call list. And at the next, for the next meeting, I'll be sending Mr. Bernalla a list of all the projects that we have scheduled and what we've awarded, so that you all can see the equal distribution amongst the consultants that we have onboard.
Dodo, I have a question.
Go ahead.
And it, the upper right, upper left is Porter. Is that, am I oriented correctly?
Lower, lower left is Porter. Upper, like, right north is going to be Four Corners.
Okay, and is, is Southmost Nature Trail on this diagram?
The Southmost Nature Trail is the, the white lines that you see that are running parallel to the ditch on the, on the lower left-hand corner.
Okay, so in other words, it will connect to the, or the trail will connect to it?
Correct.
Very nice. Okay, thank you. Those were my questions.
And this will actually, one of the intents is, we're trying to have some parking out there as well, because we currently have very limited parking in this area. So, this will be an additional, additional area where citizens or visitors can park to use the, these amenities.
My only question is, is this going to completely alleviate the flooding issue that's at Four Corners? Or is it going to just, you know, kind of help? Because ever since I've been here, we've been working on this area for a long time, and we keep approving these millions of dollar projects, and it never seems to make a very serious dent.
I mean, clearly, the Four Corners detention is one of, or the Four Corners area is one of our worst areas. I, I will be very honest, this is not going to solve the issue. This is to help alleviate flooding. I mean, to solve that issue, it's, you, you pretty much have to raise Four Corners. It's very low area, and most of the water from Boca Chica and South Padre Island Highway and 14th Street, there's a big, large area that just goes straight to this low point. So, all of these improvements that we're doing is to try to help alleviate and reduce flooding.
Hey, Dodo, this is John. What are the amenities that I'm seeing on the, on the screen?
Like I said, the amenities on these were just shown for illustration purposes. We're showing like a soccer field, a playground, or not necessarily a playground area, but like a, a water feature area that may be possible, and we have room for like a soccer field area. It's more than anything just to identify the space that's available for amenities and when we try to solicit additional grants for funding of these amenities. The current funding that we have is solely for detention purposes from Texas Water Development Board. But, you know, like I said, you know, we're trying to find other features that we can add to this design. And we are looking to include these as part of the design phase, so that we can be ready. And, you know, even when we do the construction, you know, we'll have these features available. You can't really tell from that rendering, but all of those would be well below the surface. The idea is that, you know, all of these would be inundated during times of flooding, very similar to the detention ponds that you see right south of this park. Uh, very similar to the detention ponds that you see right south of this property. You know, if y'all are familiar with this area, we've done probably, uh, since Ree Street was the first detention pond we did out in this area. And then we continued with, uh, one of the ponds that would help the North Main drain and help a little bit of Four Corners. That one, that one, that pond was more for North Main drain. Uh, it did help Four Corners a little bit because it alleviated, it rerouted some of the, the way the water would flow. This particular one, the water will flow directly. You can see the blue line uh, there. That's where the water from Four Corners will drain directly to this area before it goes into the North Main drain. So this, God willing, we'll be able to see a little bit more, um, visible improvements, uh, on Four Corners than we did with the previous ones. You know, it just depends on how much rainfall we get.
Yeah. And I, I didn't mean to take away from what I said earlier. The improvements, the, that have been very expensive, but they have made a significant difference. Before we would see Four Corners go underwater. And now the issue is they're by security drives. Um, it just, it pools and it is absolutely impossible. I've seen so many cars get stranded and idle in that area. And we really need to consider, it's also an evacuation route. So we need to make sure that all of this money we're spending is really applied to the issue and making sure that we're able to drain it and reroute the water somewhere else. Um, I love this park idea. I am all for parks and I love it. I just, uh, I'm gonna vote for it. But I really want to make sure that the city is spending every cent possible to making sure that that road is able to clear and people are able to evacuate if they should ever need to.
Like I said, I mean, it'll, it'll help alleviate the area.
Any further comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
The motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration and action on the 18th amended declaration of local disaster for public health emergency.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. This is Helen Ramirez, Deputy City Manager. I will give a brief update of the additional changes in the measures and from them, um, Dr. Rodriguez will be speaking on some of the new information related to vaccinations. Next slide, please. So, uh, this G A 32 reinforced the need that public or private gatherings outdoors should be limited to, uh, 10 persons of, and should not include people outside of a single household or living unit. And it basically clarifies that because there was another, uh, bullet point in the measure that spoke to 100 people. And so that was, uh, then amended through G A 28 and memorialized in G A 32. So we wanted to clean up uh, the, the questions with regard to what is the lit, the, the number of people out that the governor's orders wanted to limit, and that's 10 persons. Uh, also because of our hospitalizations, hospitalizations have increased, the occupants and limitations have been reduced down from 75% to 50%. Next slide. Bars and similar establishments that hold a permit from T A B C and are not restaurants as defined above, which is defined in the measures, are not allowed to open due to high hospitalizations interference with Governor Abbott's executive orders, G A 32. And then as part of our Parks and Recreation Department reopening plan, we had initially opened amenities in four parks. And what we've done is added additional parks to that, uh, to that website for, uh, reopening of those amenities for our kids and families. Next slide, please. And then, um, there, we have, uh, recently experiencing some needs of immigrant, as part of the immigrant influx, they have had a greater demand in transit services, um, with our B Metro Terminal. As you know, uh, we have long-distance bus carriers there. And many of these immigrant families and individuals, uh, destination is not Brownsville. It's really outside in other states. It says Utah, um, and Colorado. I mean, there, there, New York, all over the country. And so what we've asked is that B Metro be allowed to really create a designated area for better organization and planning at an open air facility in order to process their increased volumes and requests, which is consistent with our best pandemic, uh, protocols, because as you know, we are in COVID-19 and we have to ensure that there are safe distancing between. Sometimes we don't know exactly how many, uh, our Border Patrol will be, uh, dropping off uh, and using B Metro Terminal as, as part of their transportation needs. So we just want to be very proactive and ready for, um, any immigrants that we receive so that they can finally make it to their final destination. And so we just want to memorialize that in our COVID-19 measures that we were taking, um, the necessary protocols to assist with that. And those are all the, um, changes to the measures. Um, this would be in effect until March 2nd. Um, Dr. Rodriguez, I mean, I don't know if you have questions specifically, but also Dr. Rodriguez wanted to give an update on, um, vaccinations.
I had a question about your open air facility. Where do you have in mind for that?
Um, Art, do you want to talk to that? But we, we have habilitated a cre- uh, an area within the terminal area, you know, where the bus bays are. So it's within it. And we have, um, distance tables, um, because many of these people do not have their, um, I would say necessarily when they're upon arrival, they don't have necessarily the tickets, whether it's an airline ticket or a bus ticket ready. So we're serving as kind of travel advisors assistants with their families to be able to get that. So we sit with that.
Last time.
System.
Like last time.
It's inside. I mean, it's, it's, it's within the open air area within the terminal bus bays.
Yeah. So it, there's no additional transportation required. That was, that was my concern, but that's, thanks. Okay.
Okay. Good, Honorable Mayor, Commissioner, good afternoon. Um, what's on everyone's mind today is, uh, where are we with vaccinations? And, and one effective hospital reduction strategy with vaccinations is that we need to, we need to be a provider. So we've had a two-pronged, um, approach to this. On the short term, we're working with the county on an opportunity right now that, that we have through their vaccination program. And, and we're working, uh, hand in hand, uh, with the state as well, uh, to be a hub provider. We have been, uh, given approval to be a hub provider as of February 1st, 2021. And our next steps, uh, for the long-term strategy include, um, finalizing the, the, uh, computerized online platform for registration, which will go online on February 8th. And then the fire department and our health department are working on tabletop exercises as we prepare to take, uh, to take our city into massive vaccination efforts. Um, a- as an ongoing strategy for our community. Uh, to date, the team has created, uh, the, not only the scheduling platform, but also established tentative locations for the vaccine events. Uh, we've been training and our health authority is working to train people to provide vaccinations. We're also getting our personnel certified for, uh, proper vaccination and protocols and created a workflow for the vaccination sites and determine the necessary resources for, for the proper execution, including the registering the immunization under system known as MTRAC. And then also reporting the vaccines that have been given back to the state on a timely basis. So when we bring both strategies, the long-term strategy for the city to be the lead provider for vaccines and work with our community, uh, private partnership partners, that is the best path forward. As I mentioned earlier, on the short term, we are working with county on an opportunity they recently offered to us to provide vaccinations in our community. So working in those two-pronged approach gives us the best of both worlds. Not only are we getting our designated vaccinations, but we're able to bring more vaccines that were originally set out at, within Cameron County back into the city so that we can maximize how many of our citizens are receiving vaccines. Thank you.
Art, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What will be done for people who might not have access to the internet? Or for example, the elderly who are just not, um, connected to the internet?
That is a great question. So we have two, we actually have three parts to, to, to answer your question. One part is the, the online platform is for people who can use the internet, but to your point, those who cannot use the internet, we have, we're converting our COVID hotline number as to an assistance hotline. So individuals who have difficulty or just cannot get online can call our COVID-19 hotline number. And they will be able to process and help them and assist them through the process of registering. Our third aim that we have that we're working with the fire department is we understand there will be individuals who, and this is one of the long-term strategies, who may not be able to make it to, to a, um, to a drive-through. So we're working through the, uh, fire department through the mobile integrated health so that the paramedic can actually go on-site and give vaccinations to certain individuals who, who can show that there's a compelling reason to get the vaccinations at their, at their location. So those three aims of working with the county, us being a hub provider, and then the mobile integration health, which is part of the fire department program, we feel we're going to be able to have the maximum, uh, impact i- in our community.
Art, did, uh, um, my question, I'm sorry, Commissioner Golansky, where, did you have another question?
Uh, thank you. No, I'm done.
Okay. Um, did I hear you correctly that the Skidulu scheduling system will be up by the eighth?
Yeah. So it's a one-day, uh, install. And, uh, we've been in the queue. So February 8th is when the online platform will not only be installed, but expected to be live as well. The reason the turnaround time is so short, Dr. Galwin, is because we were already using that platform for the scheduling of the PCR testing. So coming, adding the module for vaccinations, uh, gave us a benefit of turning it into a one-day up- upgrade.
Wonderful. And so just to reiterate to the people, that means you can go online or in the case that Commissioner Golansky just said, you can call and schedule your vaccine. So there's no longer, um, then in this setup, there's no need for vouchers and standing in line and such, correct?
After February 8th? Yes, ma'am.
Great, great. And did you, and did we, um, verify as well that the Skidulu, uh, system will automatically upload or in some way upload to the MTRAC system?
Yes, ma'am. That is one of the core qualifications. And, uh, we also, uh, are working with the, the TIDAM, which is the Texas Department of Emergency Management. They require a report and the software will also generate a report for TIDAM requirements.
Excellent. I think finding that software was a big, a, a big success for us.
It is. Thank you.
Hi, Dr. Rodriguez, I have a question. Um, I know, uh, currently the vaccine's available, uh, to only people that are over 65 and then people with pre-existing conditions. How is the city gonna, um, filter, uh, people that are applying to make sure that we're, we're, we're giving the vaccine to the people that really need it?
So one of the, uh, big things, the, the population that's most susceptible is those over 65 and those under what we call now the 1B. So we're taking our responsibility seriously about that. And we know that these are individuals who cannot get to them. That's why we're working on a multi-pronged approach to, to, to try and get out to this population who not only needs it the most, but at times is not able to make it out to our drive-through. So we're very serious about trying to maintain the integrity of the program to those individuals.
Thank you. And, and congrats to you and your team for getting that, um, getting Brownsville as a vaccination hub. That's a big deal and, and we really appreciate what you guys are doing.
It's a team effort and I've said before, we, we wouldn't be here without the assistance of the fire department, the office of emergency management, the communications department. We really continue to pursue and innovate at every, at every step of the way, sir. Thank you.
And, and then in terms of allotment, what kind of volume are you expecting in terms of doses?
You know, uh, I knew the question would come up. Uh, that's the one answer I don't have yet because we were, uh, given the, uh, the February 1st approval yesterday. We do have a series of meetings with the state. Uh, what I've seen historically, what other communities our size are getting, uh, it's in the, it's gonna be somewhere in the about two, two to 4,000 range. But I don't want to speak out of turn because we have not had that key conversation with our state provider.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that concludes our presentation. Would you like to vote?
Sure. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all those who favor, please say aye.
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 I'm gonna abstain on this, uh, oh, is this the, the B Metro or was it the emergency, uh, management?
It's, it's the, uh,
The emergency declaration when then?
Yes.
The whole thing. Yeah, I'm abstaining on that, please.
Okay. Note the abstention for Commissioner Neese.
Yes, Commissioner Neese, we've noted it.
Believe that I just have it. Motion carries. Thank you.
Item five, consideration and action on offer of purchase by U.S. Customs and Border Protection for the following tracks. RGV dash B R P dash 6301, 0.18 acre. RGV dash B R P dash 6311, 5.460 acres. RGV dash B R P 6313, .076 acre. RGV dash B R P dash 6401, 11.339 acres in the amount of $170,476. And RGV B R P dash 6200, 1.093 acres in the amount of $31,039, City Manager's Office.
Uh, Mayor Protam, Commission, Commissioners, um, we, we presented this item for you last, uh, last meeting and you, you, uh, tabled for another two weeks. Um, in those two weeks, the, uh, the federal government, um, I, I received a call from the Army Corps who is dealing with these issues. And, uh, they have, uh, basically stopped, uh, all activity on the border wall. And so they basically, they can't do any work until they get further direction. So at this time, um, you know, uh, we put it back on the agenda because you, you instructed us for two weeks. So, uh, you, I, I don't know, I, I'll ask council how you, how you proceed as far as if you want to table it, indefinitely deny it, you know, however, uh, whatever the wishes the commission are. But at this point, it's, it's paused, delayed, you know? Um, eh, we don't know what's gonna happen.
We should proceed to do actual, can't we?
Uh, procedurally, you can just be tabled and that way.
I'll make the motion to table indefinitely.
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion, a second. All those who favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Uh, opposed? I just have it. Motion carries.
All right, we can move on to executive session. So, um, Commissioner Callen, I'll let you handle that.
Entertainer motion to move to executive session?
Don't move.
Second.
A second. All those who favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
It is now 5:49 PM and we will go into executive session.
We have no action coming out of executive session, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, and we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Media adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Aye. Safety. Stay safe.
Okay, it is now 6:27 PM. There being no further business before the City Commission, upon duly made motion, the meeting is now hereby adjourned.